At this time, I'll call to order the Hamilton County Council meeting for Wednesday, February 3rd. Madam Auditor, may I have a roll call, please?
Brad Beaver.
Here.
Fred Glenn.
Present.
Amy Moxlaminy.
Present.
Steve Schwartz.
Present.
Steve Nation.
Present.
Ken Alexander.
Present.
Sue Mackey.
Present.
Madam President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, I'll ask for the invocation and pledge of allegiance by Counselor Beaver.
All right, let's just have a moment of silence and remember all of our men and women in armed forces that might be in harm's way this evening. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, I need to, we will read and approve the minutes from our regular meeting on January 6th. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's moved in second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. This time, public comments. Seeing none, we will move on to committee and officer reports. I have two items. Number one, I believe all council members would have seen the requests from Dan Stevens for the council and the commissioners to have a joint session around strategic planning. I had asked for you to look at your calendars for the week of February 22nd, and I'd like to be able to report back to him maybe three dates that work best for the collective, as well as then discussion topics that you have in mind.
Are we doing, is this gonna be a before council thing?
I think we can, well, we're looking at the week of February 22nd, so it wouldn't necessarily be before council. I don't know, I know a couple of members had requested that we have the option for virtual to make it easy for scheduling purposes, and I'll just throw this out there. Looking at February 23rd, I don't know if anybody could do 9:00 AM or 10:00 AM, or if that's-
What day of the week is that?
That is a Tuesday.
The 23rd is the Tuesday?
Correct. Also, just a couple of other options would be the 24th at like 8:30 AM, 11:30 AM, or 5:00 PM.
8:30 on the 24th would work.
Wide open on the 24th.
Okay, so I've-
Nine to 11 on the 23rd.
I'm sorry, repeat that.
Between 9:00 to 11:00.
Would be good for you on the 23rd? And then what about the 24th?
24th unless it's after 5:00.
So you could do 5:00 PM?
Yep.
Could anybody else do 5:00 PM on the 20, I just want to make sure that we're sending, so on the 23rd, does 9:00 AM work for the group?
Yes.
Okay, and then 5:00 PM would work on the 24th. Is that correct? Is there any other alternative times that we want to provide that week?
Five, 5:00 would be good on, would be good on the 24th, too. I can make-
So do you want me to provide those two options? So we have a 9:00 AM and a 5:00 PM, and they can go from there? Does that work?
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Yes. I'm sorry?
Were you planning to, oh, sorry, were you planning to meet in here on the 24th at 5:00?
I would assume that we would either do, use the conference room if that's available, or if we did a virtual meeting. I don't know that we've gotten to that point. That would go probably through Dan, who would be able to help coordinate.
Oh, okay. I believe we have a board meeting that night at 7:00, so I just wanted to be sure that we weren't going to come for it.
Sure. Thank you very much. No, and I don't, and I think, again, we'll have the flexibility with some being virtual. So at this point, I'll report back then, 9:00 AM on the 23rd or 5:00 PM on the 24th. If you could, council members could send me-
We have two committees that'll be here then. 9 o'clock on the 24th.
Okay, perfect.
9 o'clock on the 23rd?
23rd.
The 23rd? That's not meeting.
So 9:00 AM on the 23rd. Counsel, if you could send me topics of discussion that are pressing for you, I'd like to have those to present to them prior to the meeting, too.
If we need, uh, maybe-
Okay.
We don't have a recording.
Yeah, I was gonna say we don't have a recording, and we have, okay. Okay, thank you very much. Secondly, I just want to commend EMA, our health department, and the Riverview collaboration with last week when I was able to go and see just the site for vaccine deployment. I'm extremely impressed. I know we've transitioned now to the fairgrounds, but I was beyond thrilled to see how efficient the vaccine deployment has been, so thank you. And that is all I have. I will ask Mr. Vice President.
I have nothing at this time.
Highway.
We met this morning, Counselor Alexander and Schwartz and myself, along with Brad Davis and Joel Thurman, and he gave us an update. There's two items on our agenda that we'll be approving later, but the first one is a, it's mostly a housekeeping thing for right-of-way parcels that we were, we encumbered it last year, but we had to move funds this year, and that's what that is for $27,000. That's for the 236 Free East, Deming to Tollgate repaving, and that, or, and then, not repaving, but just work on that road. And then the next one is a balance, it's another item, moving things from the balance of the $5 million for the 37 overage that we agreed to pay for, and counsel, we decided that it should be from a certain fund, so we had to move some money around, and that is an amount of a little over $3 million that we'll be approving later.
Thank you, Sue. Finance.
Yeah, we had a finance meeting in January. We met with Mike Howard, discussed the refunding of the bonds. He'll talk about that in a minute, and we also talked about raising the major bridge fund to the maximum levy to help pay for some highway projects down the road. But keep in mind with that, that is just so the auditor could advertise it. We can adjust it back down at budget time, but she had a deadline to meet at which she could advertise for raising major bridge, and that's what I'm recommending.
Thank you very much. Brad, personnel.
We did not meet, although later in your agenda, you will see several personnel issues.
Thank you, Steve. And moving on to miscellaneous, do you have any miscellaneous items?
Yeah, I got one. I want to throw out the idea of budget instructions. Robin and Don asked for those at our finance meeting. I went back and looked at the last two years of budget instructions, and so what I'd recommend is that if you look at the last couple of years, what we've done is we allow at the office holder, our head's discretion, all the employees can move up one step at the department head's discretion. No increases in 2,000, 3,000, 4,000, and the only controversial thing is whether you're going to entertain new hires. So kind of decide that, we'll tell the auditor, and she can put out budget instructions.
I have no issues with that. Thank you for doing that, Brad.
That's all right. But what do you think about new hires? You want, you want to hear about them at budget time, or just say no new hires?
I would say we should at least listen.
I would agree.
Yeah, we've listened plenty of times and not approved them in budget hearings, so I don't think there's anything-
I would say if they have requests, let's hear them.
Okay. Good enough for you, Robin?
Yes, thank you.
That's all I got.
Thank you very much. Brad, anybody else?
I got another one. So I know at the finance committee, there was a lot of interest on the, we were talking about the, some of the bond issues that we're gonna, I think, discuss here shortly, but brought up about the parking garage, and we started discussing a few things as far as the status of that project. It was contingent on a lot of different items moving, projects that are developments, working with the city, and so on. So took it upon myself to reach out and try and get some additional information on it, so we could get the status on it. Econ development on the existing county lot is moving forward. We have a letter from the City of Noblesville that says that it got unanimous approval from the city council, and that it's gonna have, run through its last, its final initiation for, on the 5th, in front of the Noblesville Redevelopment Commission. So they think with positive recommendations for the incentive and zoning approvals, that that project does go. So with that, there's, you know, then it's looking at our project and the, and the one that we had committed to doing before to provide parking for staff and visitors in the government building, and reached out to Dan Stevens to get information about schedule. With my background in construction, I reached out to Counselor Beaver. We were able to look at a set of documents. It's clearly far along. It's in a stage that's referred to as design development, but it looks to be a few months away from, from moving forward. But without me just going through a complete diatribe, Dan, I don't know if you could step forward and give maybe, introduce the team, and maybe they could give a presentation to the whole council?
I'll be happy to introduce the team. Take my mask off so you can hear me clearly. Mitch Hanham from Garmont Construction Services, the builder, and Sanjay Patel from RQAW, the architect, have both a handout for all the council members and a couple of drawings to show to you to see what the project will produce. I'll turn it over to them.
There are pretty pictures, so.
Are they the same photo?
Oh, I will not. No.
Okay. Well, I was, I was wondering if we could get one to see through the camera.
Yeah, there is a- I do have a third, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Okay, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to present this evening. As Dan introduced me, my name's Mitch Hanham. I'm the regional manager for the Indianapolis Office of Garmont Construction, and with me today is Sanjay Patel from RQAW, the design firm, and we wanted to provide a high-level update on where things stood from a scope, schedule, and budget standpoint on the parking garage that we've been working on for the last few months. So right now, what you're looking at is the, is the current design of the parking garage. We've been evaluating both a four-story and a five-story option for that parking garage, varying between 375 spaces and 475 spaces. It's a cast-in-place concrete structure with a precast facade, masonry, veneer on top of that precast, and I think from an aesthetic standpoint, we've had a review by the City of Noblesville, and they preliminarily signed off on it. We have submitted preliminary documents for TAC review, so we are in line for that process at the City of Noblesville, which is moving along smoothly. Right now, our expected schedule is to be done with design towards the end of March, mid-March, and then be bidding through March and April, and then be able to start construction in May. Currently, City of Noblesville has told us that we would be able to start no sooner than May. That's kind of where the approvals for permitting would land us, so that's really what's setting that date right now. From a cost standpoint, for our four-story garage, we are just a hair under $9.5 million, which was what our directive was at the start of this project, and then to go to a bigger five-story garage adds approximately $2 million to the total price tag. That's the short, so do you have any questions?
When we, when we started this, they were using an acronym when we brought all the-
GMP.
Yeah, GMP.
What is it?
Guaranteed Maximum Price, GMP.
Okay, so I was thinking, if this was a, that may be it, I can't remember, but it had to do with-
Bot, the contract type, yeah. Will operate transfer.
Are we still on that program?
Yes, we are.
Okay, so we greenlight this for X amount of dollars, whether it's four or five stories. At the end, you will build it, and you will turn it over to us as a finished product.
That is correct.
At the price. We don't see any change orders for increases, none of that. It is a hair under $9.5 million if it's the four-story, and you hand it over to us when it's done.
That's correct.
Now, hold on, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Underneath the bot agreement. That was for four stories.
Yeah.
So we had designed to do five with the, with the infrastructure, the footings, to eventually put a fifth story in.
Okay.
Okay. So I requested to have a fifth-story price to present to you and the commissioners, because when I started looking at the relay-down prices and the issues we're having to park, we'd have to shut the whole parking garage down.
Steve, we're, we're gonna talk about that later.
Okay, but I just want to make sure that you're, the nine-point was for four stories, don't-
That's correct.
Okay.
That's what we're originally told.
I want to make sure, because you said four or five, and I want to make sure that it's just for four stories.
Before you walk away, what's the, the sale of the land, what was that price again?
$4.5 million.
Four and a half.
Four and a half.
$4.5 million.
Right. That was a big- That was a big part of of us doing four, too, was because of that that price point and recouping some of that money.
The council needs to keep in mind, we've already approved that.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So it is going as we envisioned it to go if we add another story. You will be done with all the drawings, so you can go out to bid sometime in March?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And you're with the current climate we got, you think that you can start digging in the ground in April slash May?
May first is our current target date because that's the date where we anticipate having permits.
That's pretty ambitious, isn't it?
Ambitious in what regard?
That you can mobilize that quickly.
Um, no, I don't think it's overly ambitious.
You're going to get you're going to go to bid in March, get the bids back in April, and expect them onsite May first.
That's correct.
Okay. So that means if this all goes the way it's we need to have a plan in place to move our employees off that parking lot someplace else by then.
Before then, yeah, there's some work that has to happen before we get there.
Okay. Isn't it?
Is that a question we want to ask Steve? That I'm pretty sure.
Well, we we got Garmont and guys up here now.
Why not? But they're but they're not going to come up with a plan for the moving the employees?
No, no. I don't expect it to. I was just trying to make sure he we understand what each other's got, timeline was.
Are there other questions?
Looks great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely, yeah.
Does anyone else have anything under miscellaneous? Seeing then, we will move on to unfinished. My understanding is we're not.
Amy, are we moving off this topic completely for tonight's agenda?
It's on the agenda somewhere.
Or is it in the agenda somewhere?
We have we have there's in the agenda, there there's a discussion on the additional request for the.
Okay, so will we bring it up again?
Correct.
Thank you. My understanding is unfinished. We do not have an appointment for Sheridan as of today. Is that the understanding? Ken, I believe you had had that understanding as well.
Yeah, I I went out and met with Sheridan this last weekend, met with their town council, local leaders, put out some feelers, need to get more people engaged in these types of activities. But at this point, Sheridan does not have that seat filled.
Okay, so we'll leave that as unfinished. Moving on to item eight, the Hamilton County Local Income Tax Revenue Refunding Bonds of 2021. First was a presentation by county attorney Mike Howard.
Get my technology guru here. I have everything ready to go. I'm on the screen. You don't care about me, you care about all these numbers. Open. Is it plugged in the right?
Yeah.
All right. Old-fashioned wiggle of court. Members of council, Mike Howard, county attorney, here tonight to run by you and seek your approval of refunding of three separate financings that are out at between three, four, five, and five and a half percent. We are talking about thirty million dollars of outstanding debt. We're talking about a estimated savings of four and a half million dollars over the next ten to twelve years. So you know, this does not extend the payment of any outstanding bonds. It does as far as moving them out in date. It is clearly a savings related to two things. Number one, the interest rates, which we have Landon Boim of Robert Baird and Associates here this evening. He has run our estimates of savings at one and a half percent that these bonds would be out at. And frankly, he tells us that if we can get in the market real quick, we're probably looking better than that. The goal would be to get unanimous consent, to waive the rules and pass the ordinance before you on first reading. That ordinance authorizes the issuance of the bonds, appropriates the proceeds of the bonds, and allows the team to go forward. Our finance team in this endeavor is, we mentioned Baird, they're acting as underwriters. They'll be the people that go out and get into the market of sophisticated institutional buyers and sell the bonds at the lowest rate possible. They're eager to get on with that endeavor. Rick Hall from Barnes and Thornburg is acting as bond counsel, and Brian Colton from Baker Tilly, formerly known as Umbaugh, who's worked with the auditor's office on many projects, will be acting as financial advisor, and then I'll be acting as local counsel. Want to kind of explain a little bit about these bonds and where we are. The first bonds we'll talk about is the ninety-six four twenty-one bonds. This TIF district was created along the I'm sorry, the east side of US thirty-one back in or I'm sorry, US four twenty-one back in two thousand. At that time, it was not included in the city of Carmel. It was not contiguous, but there was a substantial development going out there. And in a TIF district, you want a base year that has the lowest assessed value over that geographic area. So the area was established in two thousand before all of that retail went in place. We we can show you up on the screen. This would be the savings on the debt. The first column you see is the prior debt service, about one point nine third million dollars a year. With the refunding, that debt service drops down to a little less than three hundred thousand dollars a year with a total gross savings of two million five hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. These bonds were put in place back in twenty eleven and twenty twelve. The bonds were used for internal improvements in the shopping area there. Also used, if you look on exhibit E in your packet, you can see that in the colored lines there, the north-south roads from there have been improvements to Town Road, Ditch, one hundred and twenty-six, and one hundred and thirty-six. These improvements were done by Carmel. The TIF money and the proceeds of the bonds were handled by the county and has allowed them to do those projects. Since that time, the cost or the cost savings that we talked about earlier, if you look at what the prior debt service was, and there was substantial savings, the debt was about one point nine million dollars. The TIF was close to three point eight. So that money was used for West one hundred and forty-sixth Street by the Highway Department. They have there was not a lot enough money for the last two stages. And the Highway Department, the commissioners approved as drainage board, the loaning of money to finish that road to be repaid from the excess TIF. And we'll talk about that a little bit later. So you can see that from that from the the TIF that's going to be generated, we're going to be able to have not only about two and a half million dollars in savings over the prior debt service, there'll be about another million eight of extra TIF coming in every year. So that those funds will be repaid, we anticipate, in about six years. That is the first set of bonds we're we're refunding. The second set of bonds concerns the Village Park Economic Development Area. This area was originally on the east side of US thirty-one, between one hundred and forty-six and one hundred and fifty-six. The area was established in nineteen or in the early nineteen nineties when the Simon Development went into place. The first bond issue was three point two million dollars. That's been paid off, but there are additional bonds in the amount of I'm sorry, about ten million dollars in order to to be paid from this TIF. This TIF district, again, is retail, and I think we need to we need to talk a little bit about retail because the primary savings we have in these two bonds, there's also some savings. Those of you that have been on the council for a few years, remember, we had a guaranteed savings contract for the solar project out at the jail and the correction system. Those bonds are out at about three percent now. We take them down to one percent. There's not as much savings here because we had a prepayment penalty of one and a half, but you can see the gross savings of that one is two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in the I'm sorry, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars over the life of the project. The previous project, Village Park, the savings is one point seven nine two million, and the first one is two point five one seven million. So the savings with an estimated interest rate of one and a half percent, total savings will be four and a half million dollars, and we expect that to go down a little bit. There is another reason that we need to get our debt service down as possible because some of these savings that we have, we're probably going to need are friend, the pandemic is going to cause some problems. These two TIF districts are both retail. In working with Robin Ward, the county assessor, they estimate in the next two years, the average reduction in assessed value of brick and mortar retail could be somewhere between twenty-five and thirty percent. So if you look at the prior debt service that we had, and if you look at exhibit D in your packet, which I have up on the the board, the first line, A, the debt payment now from ninety-six four twenty-one is the one point nine, collections three point eight, and you can see the annual excess is one point eight nine oh million dollars. We're using that to repay the drainage funds. In line B, we've looked at the refunding debt, the one point six, that's what our new debt will be, but we've taken the collections down thirty percent because if you do have a thirty percent reduction in assessed value in a TIF district, that reduces your revenue dollar for dollar. So looking at the assessed value and the real numbers, our annual excess drops substantially to one one million two hundred and ten thousand dollars. That's still with some reserve funds we have, et cetera, will allow us to get the ten million dollars repaid, even if this goes down by this amount. And it won't start going down until collections in twenty twenty-two because the assessed value that the twenty twenty-one collections are on was pre-pandemic and pre those appeals. Again, in Village Park, we have the same issue. In fact, in that one, right now, we have an excess of one hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars a year, so it's pretty close. And with the thirty percent drop in revenue, even to pay the debt, the projected debt service, we're still going to have a little shortfall. To make up for that, we are funding from bond proceeds in Village Park, a debt service reserve fund of nine hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. And we have extra TIF that's been collected back over the years of a of over one and a half million dollars. So that money will be there, will have enough to cover those shortfalls. And again, both of these TIF districts expire with collections in twenty twenty-nine, so we're really looking at a relatively short risk period. The other reason we're able to sell these bonds so cheap is because we're seeking this council's approval of a lit backup of these bonds. The Village Park bonds already have a lit backup, and that means if there's not enough TIF, then the income tax, you the council has to make up the difference in the bond payment and income tax, thereby affecting your general fund. That's why when with this lit program, we are trying to make sure that the to minimize any chance that they get in the lit because that's your general fund, and that's what you you work on. I think I have covered most of the items in my outline. I'm sure it was boring enough. If you're not bored enough, I'll give you Landon's eighteen-page detailed printout, and it's good nighttime reading. With that, I'll stop and enter any entertain any questions, and if I can't answer them, I'm sure Landon can help us.
I'm looking through this, Mike. I don't one thing I don't see is is fees a fee schedule for underwriters, bond attorneys. So just if you have that handy, is that something you can find?
The underwriters discount for this thirty million dollar will be about one hundred and seventy-eight thousand.
Okay.
The bond council, local council, who is the lowest paid, the county council, council, who's I've of course going to be reviewing these documents, the rating fees, et cetera, will be about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Which as a percent of the deal is pretty.
Okay, so we should pay that the fees off fairly quickly then?
Well, the fees are all the fees are rolled into the amount of.
I get that part.
Yeah.
I get that part, but they still what I'm what I'm saying is, you still need to calculate that with it's rolled in. It's still there.
Yes, it's there.
Okay. So.
The net savings that you were expressing as is minus the fees.
Yeah, but he said four hundred you said four hundred thousand. Give me a second please. Four hundred thousand dollars you said total, right?
Four hundred and twenty-eight thousand.
Four hundred and twenty-eight thousand?
Probably.
Okay. And then your savings?
Well, no, it's two fifty and one seventy-eight, so it was.
Four hundred and twenty.
Four four thirty, I think. But yes, that is included in the borrowing, so it will be paid off those will be paid off with bond proceeds. And the savings, you know, with the bond proceeds, we're going to pay off the old debt, pay the issuance costs, underwriter discount, and the these revenues then become net numbers.
Okay. Quick, it's not I know we looked at this. What was that overall? Was the total savings per year for these bonds?
It.
Four point five.
Four point five.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not per year.
It paid back period like one year.
Yeah, yeah, that's okay.
And it's over ten, twelve years.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah. Sounds good to me. And I know that's just the one question I didn't hit you with in finance, I just wanted to to get that out there.
All right. Madam President?
Yes, Sue.
I have a just a statement or an observation. So if we if we do not refinance this with the reduction of the assessed value of that retail, we're going to be in dire straits, correct?
Well, in ninety-six four twenty-one, you probably will still be in the black, but it'll be awfully close. In in Village Park, you're going to be you're going to be in the red. And the guaranteed savings contract, and we haven't talked much about that, there's a bond behind that guaranteeing the savings. So we and that that debt goes out to twenty thirty-eight, but you're already programmed. You budget that payment, and then you reimburse yourself from the savings. So and there's a bond behind that, a maturity bond that the energy company provides. So we're not tankering with that. We're just saving a little little extra money, not a lot. But there's economies of scale, issuance costs, and all that's going to be substantially the same, whether that's in the deal or out of the deal.
Thank you.
I know, Steve.
I just had one statement for those council members that are on the finance committee. I would hope that. I would hope that Mike Carter is notified of this.
He was at the meeting. Mike was at, Mike was at the meeting, and he was nodding as I went through the short presentation.
So the long, long of the short is, I assume that his forecast will be included in our budget hearings, as he always does the report.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that's.
I, I don't want to speak for the other two. Fred had a question, but generally speaking, the Finance Committee was in favor of this rebonding.
Okay.
Yeah, I, the other question that came up in there was just the term. This is just a straight refi, not like you're extending out. It is just the same term, it's just a lower interest rate payback, so.
Absolutely. The, the TIF bonds all expire with the 2029 collections, and the energy savings, I think, goes out to 2038.
Is this, is this something that, that, I mean, I know this is not about this, but from the other bonds and things that we have in the county that, that you guys are, are looking at?
We, any outstanding bonds, these underwriter guys are ringing the phone, and we started talking about this because some of these bonds can't, they have call protection on them. In other words, you can't refund them until a certain date. And if you do, the interest becomes taxable, and it's a, it's a lot, lot more difficult to realize savings before the call date. But I think the last call date is February of this year, and we can close 90 days before that. So we're ready to go as fast as we can go.
Any other questions?
I have none.
Awesome, thank you very much.
I would make a motion that we suspend the rule.
Let's, oh, wait one second.
Oh, we have to open it.
We're going to open, we're going to open the public hearing. And if there is public comment, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And at this point.
I'll make a motion, we'll suspend the rule.
I'll second.
On the first reading, is what you're saying, and then approve.
Seconded.
It's moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we need to vote on the ordinance as presented, thank you.
My apologies. Motion to approve the ordinance authorizing the issuance of the bonds.
And appropriating the proceeds.
And appropriating the proceeds.
Thanks, so moved.
Motion, we need a second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howard.
Now we will discuss new business. First on the agenda is approval of vendor claims.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, we have the Sheriff Commissary report. Ultimately, what we need to do here is just accept and acknowledge that it's been received. So we don't have any formal procedure that needs to follow.
So moved.
We don't need to do any of that. It's just more of an acceptance that we've received it, just making sure everybody's aware. Item C, grant funding approval. My understanding is it's probably best that we go item by item. I do believe that the first three could be combined, but first on the agenda would be Fund 8263, 2020 SHSP Grant Transfer for $7,000. And then additionally, depending upon how you see fit, if you wanted to combine those SHSP grant transfers, we can do so. That's what we're keeping.
Yeah, I'll make the motion, we can, combine the first three SHSP grants.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have Fund 8903, 93.332, CARES Act appropriation of $120,960.
So moved.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. No, it was included in the motion. Fund 8904, CARES Act HAVA appropriation, $96,073. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Fund 8905, CARES Act HAVA Phase II appropriation, $201,715.51.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Fund 8906, the 144 Amendment and Transfer in the amount of $754,576.80.
So moved.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Fund 8907, CARES Act Rental Assistance Appropriation in the amount of $10,125,114.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's moved and seconded for discussion. Is there any discussion?
Yep. Who wants to talk about this one?
Which one is that?
How about one of the commissioners?
It's the rental assistance of the $10 million.
Ooh, yeah.
Oh, that's, that's how I did that. It's not on my sheet.
Good evening.
Good evening. What would you care to know?
It's my understanding through discussions with other council members, what this is, is the federal grant.
That is correct.
That comes through the county, and then your, your plan is to pass this off to the township trustees?
We will have an interloco with one, and that would be Westfield, Washington trustee Danielle Tollin. That township will be administering with the help of the other township trustees. So they will have an interloco with Westfield, Washington, and then we have an interloco with Westfield, Washington.
Okay, is the trustee from Westfield, Washington here?
She is.
Come on down.
Come on down. And if I could just give you a little background why we made the selection of the trustees. And it's primarily, this is rental assistance, utility assistance. This is what trustees do every day with assistance, not to this magnitude, nor is it to these standards because these monies are so valuable because it's at 80% of the poverty level, where their requirements are much, much lower for assistance. So we wanted to have directly with the trustees working because we think we can do it more efficiently, and we think that they are the experts in what they do.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Danielle Carrie Tollin. I'm the Westfield, Washington Township Trustee, for those that don't know me. Yeah.
Okay, so I guess got a couple of questions for you. The, the truth is, commissioners have decided this is the way they want to do it. We're the appropriating body. I don't have a better idea, so I'm not going to try to interject that. I do have some experience with federal grants since I'm our liaison to the, our airport that we own. We get lots of federal money through that. You realize the gravity of what you're doing here?
Absolutely, I do.
You screw this up, we don't get any more federal money.
Absolutely, definitely.
Okay? And that's a big weight on your shoulders. And, and we don't want to get halfway through it, realize we're in over our head, and kick it back to the auditor.
Won't do that.
Okay.
I can assure you, within less than a week, I've already implemented my, my implementation team already in, in full swing. We've already met twice. I have an advisory team advising on guidelines. Have met with Robin and Todd, and had many multiple communications. I've dealt with, as well, with federal grants in my previous life as Director of Operations for a nonprofit, and.
Good, well, we get lots of federal money. If you interrupt the pipeline, we will be unhappy.
Yeah. I totally understand.
Well, and I appreciate your hearing that you have some background because I think the concern becomes the complexity of just federal grant compliance and the reporting side, and how intricate and detailed that needs to be. So if you're confident in your abilities, then we obviously trust the decision. When you say that you've already deployed your team, I'm just curious, when, with the advisory team, I think, and your implementation team, who, who are those teams consistent of? Oh, perfect, thank you.
I should probably put my hands on first, right? I'm just peeling out the corner.
Back up.
And I can go over with you guys. Robin, you already have it. Thank you.
Make it happen.
So the implementation team is obviously the team of hired contractors or staff that's already in my office, or additional staff that we've hired on to help make sure that Robin and everybody here has all the support that we need on the backend and on the frontend. So I'm not going to read off everybody. You guys can read yourself, but if you do have any questions, please let me know. The advisory team are the ones that are going to keep us going on the backend for the community. So these are community leaders that work in the housing industry to help make sure the guidelines are set in a way, like if we need any additional guidelines set and aren't, aren't, and on top of the federal guidelines, that's the implementation team.
What's the, what, are you, are any of these people paid on this first page here?
The top implementation team, basically Cindy and below, those are paid contractors.
So they're, are they going to be full-time?
Some of them, they're hourly, so.
How much, how much, how much fees do you think, how much in fees are going to eat up the, the grant proceeds?
As of right now, 10% can be used for administration. I am still constructing the budget. I have an idea of what it's going to be, but I don't want to give you a false number right now. I will have that to the commissioners hopefully by Friday.
Okay.
My budget.
Yeah, can you copy our president and on that, please? Okay, and just, so you're kind of the lead trustee?
Yep.
How are you, just, just to give me a structural breakdown here? How is, a guy over in Carmel gets, how's he going to communicate with you? How's his team going to communicate with you when he has needs?
So if there's an applicant that is needing assistance, we will have a portal. It's a software program that we have, and it's called Uncork, which is on here. We've, we've already went through the process. We've already done some implementation with them. They are actually part of the NACO, which is the National Association of Counties. This is who they recommend on using the software program. So this software program will be our housing for everything. The applicant will apply through there. We can have the applicant, the landlord, or a third party, which our third parties can be our partners, which are nonprofits or churches or whoever, can help applicants apply. Once somebody applies, it will then go to the appropriate township where they live. That township will then do a second verification from the backend, kick it back to us. We will then make payment. We will then send claims to Robin. She will then make.
So we have to, and we do the additional appropriation?
Yep.
I go, it, it, the city of Carmel is just, you know, where my experience in dealing with people, most of it, it's, it's a local office, I mean, in case you didn't know that.
Yep.
So if you, you talk to 100 people door-to-door on any given day, a lot of them, you know, I mean, a good percentage of them don't even know that we, county government's going on. And I, out of that, out of that percentage, you break it down even further, I don't think you're going to find not one of those people, not one. If you knock on 100 doors and get 100 people face-to-face over there, that's going to know who that township trustee is. So, and this is what I was talking to Commissioner Airbrand about. I mean, what, what, how are people that, that need this over there going to know that this is available?
So we are, again, partnering with, we have over 380-something agencies and churches on our document lists already. We are going to be reaching out to them with a large communication plan and rolling that out very quickly here, once we get all of our frequent ask questions, once we get everything kind of settled here in the next week. Reaching out to them, letting them know exactly how the protocol is going to go. Do you want to partner? How do you want to partner? We're going to have all these different levels of partnerships that they can come in as partners. Once that happens, and they will be reaching out to their community, whether it's Hispanic, whether it's Asian, whether it's disability, whether it's seniors, right? We are going to make sure that we.
Or people that have been displaced by this pandemic, service workers, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Is that, the trustees under this grant can work directly with landlords. Oh, sorry. Can you understand me?
Like Charlie Brown's.
Exactly. No, the, the first thing we're going to do as we organize is to reach out to landlords through Family Promise. We have a list of over 200 landlords.
Oh, okay, that's.
Because what this is for is COVID-related. And so we've got this window, and we're trying to have the landlords have forbearance if they have people that are behind, because we're required to pick up the back end of it first with the arrears, and then keep people in. So this is, as we gear up, it's not instantaneous. We want to reach out to the landlord saying, we have this money. Please forbear with your tenants that you think will qualify. Contact us directly if your tenants don't do it.
That's a really, really good idea, I did, yeah.
Yeah, because I, we want to keep people in place and not try to work with homeless people. We want to keep people where they are, and assurance to, I'm a landlord. If I have that insurance, then I will forbear.
How long a timeframe is, is how long do you have to spend? Do you have a time limit on the $10 million?
Yeah, so 65% have to be obligated by September 30th, then the remaining by the end of year.
Okay.
How quickly, I know obviously you're going to ramp up, right? So how quickly do you anticipate, let's just say, checks flying out the door, right? I mean, from.
I could start tomorrow.
Okay.
Theoretically, but because of the software program, we're, we're in the, the heat of that right now, of the workflow process with the software program. So they obligated, and I pushed, and also I want to let you guys know, I negotiated the contract with them and got them down significantly on what they originally proposed to be. They assured me within three weeks to have a software program.
So I assume with the software program, being that you're not just purchasing it for a short period of time, it's something that you anticipate you could utilize across the, I mean, I assume.
For the future?
Yes.
Hopefully, I, I'm, that's what my goal is, is, but right now it's specifically for this process.
All right, before we take a vote, I just want to say one, one thing real quick. I just want to say kudos to our auditor team and our commissioners on this because what was it, two weeks or something? It came around that quick? I mean, awesome job, guys. Just wanted to say that. That's, that, this is great. How many counties received this?
There were five entities, and I think there were four counties, and there might have been one city. And it dealt with population over 200,000.
We're extreme with what.
Yeah, I mean, that's, this is good, good job.
I do have, I'm sorry, I have one other question. When you think about, and it's similar to kind of the process of how, Fred, if you recall, with the business grants, you know, there was a lot of scrutiny on how you prioritize who gets what, not obligating money, I guess, to those until you really see the full spectrum. So do you have metrics in place to measure?
Yes, absolutely.
The trustees, some of them, I don't know all of them, but some of them already have some pretty strict measurements in place already for that type of thing, don't they?
We already have the measurements. We already have the, we have guidelines, and actually the commissioners are our court system, basically. So everybody's denied, but we have all that.
Yeah.
Actually, ours are stricter than what.
Yeah, oh, yeah. During the pandemic, I know I sat on many of the community meetings that we had that you ran, and it had 30, 40 agencies there. You were dealing with this there even before you had it because it's part of your charter, why you exist. And, and so I know that there's going to be a lot more people you'll be able to help now with this, county-wide.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Sorry, I'll take this back off. Fund 9123, fiscal year '21, IDOC Grant Transfer for $6,400.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Fund 9148, fiscal year '19 and '20, JDAI Transfer, $3,848.79.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Now we will move on to additional appropriations, reductions, and transfers. I will open the public hearing concerning additional appropriations. Item A, Fund County General requesting additional appropriation of $2,182,532. Item one of that, Commissioners Parking Garage, the amount of $2 million, with Ken Alexander as sponsor.
Motion to table?
I'm sorry, did you say motion to table for Finance Committee? It's been moved and seconded. There's no discussion if it's been moved for tabling.
Here, we can have discussion now, right?
So you could, actually, you could retract your motion and say you'd like to, to go to Finance, and you could then have discussion.
We can have, we can have discussion on this motion, once we got a motion at second, can't we?
Not on table.
All right, motion to send to Finance Committee.
So you want to take back your, okay. It's been moved and seconded to go to Finance Committee. Let's have discussion around the parking garage, and we can go from there.
Well, as, as the, so the attached additional appropriation request was, was requested by our Director.
Um, well, as, as the, so the attached additional appropriation request was, was requested by our directors. I think Steve's already talked to some degree about, about this. And this was to identify the cost to add a floor now and avoid having to incur excessive additional costs to remobilize years down the road, cranes, trailer scaffolding, lots of things that go into it to bring a contractor back on board. In addition to the hardships that could be with the, with the county employees to have to relocate out of the garage. I know that when I worked on the Eskenazi project, we had to relocate the staff there. It was a million dollars just to relocate staff while we built the parking garage to support that. But obviously a lot smaller facility than what we had there, but similar type of impacts. So Steve, if you could come up and talk a little about this, that'd be great.
First, we're currently working on the parking plan now. We pretty well have figured out how we're going to do this. Transportation has been an issue for Noblesville schools and boys and girls club to transport during certain times of day during the fourth quarter. So what questions do you have for me?
I don't really have any. I think it's a decision of the council and the commissioners whether we add the fifth floor. I am certainly happy that Garvone come in at $9.5 million. I've always been in favor of this project, so that's what our motion is. If you need $2 million to add another floor, we'll go to finance. We're supposed to meet with Reuters in February anyway and talk about different ways that we could or couldn't. In the time between this meeting and our March meeting, county council has to decide whether they want to buy another floor or not. That's really it. The reasons why are the reasons why. Uh, I would also, as many reasons as there are, and I'm in favor of the garage, is what is our expected increase in personnel? We backed away from the expansion of this building. And so it's not going to get added on to in the near future. And our experiences with COVID and working from home, what will be the amount of employees working in these two buildings in the coming future after COVID, once we've experienced who can work from home? So we all need to decide in our own mind, do we want another floor on the parking garage for future growth for $2 million?
Totally agree. Well, let me add this one caveat. We have seen over the last couple of years, a large increase in jury practice. We've had to park them over at Riverview Hospital and at Scornacross. This will help solve some of that issue, right? Uh, so I brought this to commissioners and to you for the reason of the extra cost is going to be now and what we have to shut down the parking garage to do it later and we could save money. That is why it was brought to you now. It was as a separate project. We met the obligation that we met on. I just want to make sure everybody's aware, as these increases in these jury trials came up, we still have to accommodate the jury. We're seeing such a high number of those. We literally have to park them over, over at Riverview Hospital, 100 people at a time. And we know that those will slow down right now and those are going to be extreme eventually and it's going to be ongoing.
So, uh, go ahead.
Just like to add one thing, you know, and, and you made a very valid point and as we, as we add courts, those numbers are going to change and I, I feel like it's been an obligation of the council as we move forward to support the commissioners that we try to build.
What was that, what was that comment? It's our obligation to support the commissioners? I, I disagree with that conclusion.
Uh, let me, let me rephrase that then for you. So as we move forward and the commissioners bring projects like this, and we have supported, um, in the past, building out for the future, the next 20 years, I think it's a smart move that we build this project out for the next 20 years. Although right now in the pandemic, a lot of office spaces is low here, but it really will make a big difference as we add several courts in the future.
And it is my responsibility if I see this stuff to bring it to the council as I did another project.
I disagree with that too.
Yeah, Steve, my thing is, um, we, we sat there and I think we had two or three meetings.
Correct.
And you didn't mention this then.
Actually, we did. We talked about the building was going to be built.
Wait, wait, let me finish one second here, okay?
I have it written down.
Okay.
Yeah, but it was designed for.
Okay, this is what we talked about and then this was brought up to add the floor. And then it was said that people are starting to work from home, that we won't use that, okay? You were there. Then we turn around and said, we're going to sell the land for this much and we're going to contribute this. We did, we all put it all in a package, what would work, and that's what we did. We moved forward and then we're right, we're about to, a couple of months before we're about to break ground. Whenever these said and done, we got this financed, we went through Reuters, we did all this, we agreed on it, it was unanimous, then this comes.
I agree. I agree. Well, wholeheartedly, correct. But the building was originally designed to add a fifth floor at some point.
Right, but you did say building was at ma, the, the way I understood it was if building it at max capacity at that fifth, what was said was we would be overbuilding and would not be seen for the, we would not have the need for the foreseeable future.
Correct.
So I understand building out. All I'm saying is, is that if this was something that you were thinking.
But it wasn't at the, it wasn't, so it wasn't at the original time, okay?
Which wasn't that long ago, if we think about it though.
It seems, I'm sorry, but it seems like.
No, did it come from somewhere else? Here's my question. Did it come, was this brought to you somewhere else? Was there a push? Is it going to be used for public access, parking for Nobles? I'm just curious, because it just.
There, there has not. It would add parking for Noblesville after, after, there is not a push from Noblesville.
Okay.
But there is not a push from Noblesville.
Okay.
Okay, but for me, when I'm looking at the project and the cost now, right, to build it, and we're going to have to shut down Clifton Street and the problem we're going through now to get parking to, to handle while the building's being built and that law's gone, I'm trying to find a way to do it. And I see a problem in the future if we have to build a fifth floor and shut that down, where are we going to park it?
Well, you do realize that the jury trial comments that you just made and all of those, those were not made when you were talking.
Correct, they were not.
So there's a lot of circumstantial changes that have happened and it just seems.
I, I understand.
You know how it seems.
I totally, I totally understand.
President.
Yes.
We've got, we're going to, we're going to go to finance.
Yep.
We've got a month. Everybody can ponder in their own mind whether they want another floor for $2 million or not. Hashing out the reasons for and the reasons against is just going to, it's all going to.
If I could just ask one question.
Oh, we're going to get some more.
Yes, Ken, go ahead.
Um, so obviously an investment like this is a return on the investment later down the road. So, you know, we're right now at 375 spaces.
Correct.
That accommodates us for how long before we would need the extra from your perspective?
I thought.
You don't know that though.
But I don't, I don't know.
I, I agree that he doesn't know.
I don't think the county works on return on investment.
Yeah.
But, but, but when I look at, when I look at, in five years, if I got to build this, is that an investment that I want to do then? And I, and I'm not suggesting, what is, how many, how many spaces are we obligated to provide right today? And it's not 375.
No, it's 3, 333.
333. So we have space in there for a growth of 40 more spaces.
Correct.
So then this would take it up to 140 additional spaces.
Correct. I don't have the numbers.
Yeah.
Understand what you're saying about the deal. Okay, the deal was 9.5. And we, you know, I was naive, quite honestly, when I said, well, we'll just build it so we can add another floor. And that was probably as much my idea as anybody else. But it wasn't until we went through this process where I realized we will never add another floor because the pain of doing so would be cost ineffective. It, it's the gymnastics we're having to go through now to figure out where we're going to put people in a safe place to get them to and from while we're building this. And we're going to have to do the same thing at an inflated price. So we three commissioners thought it was imperative to tell you, this is what it costs, it's your decision. We made the deal, but you all decide whether we will ever build that fifth floor. I don't think so.
Would you, uh, look into the future and see if you think we'll ever add on to this building?
Oh, yeah. That our growth area is still courts. I know you've got a former judge sitting in your crew.
Oh, I know we got a Ford. I'm asking you.
Well, I just, you know, I'm in the business. Our growth area is in the courts. And the comment about juries, the comment about litigants, we're going to find places for them to park, not alone, have a place for the court. And we could only make smaller courts so far. Marion County's a fine example.
I know I have a comment from Steve Schwartz as well as Steve Nation, so Steve, I'll start with you.
Um, I just have a question. This, um, the folks at RQAW and Garvone, um, if I could just maybe ask you actually two questions. Uh, the first one being, have you had a nod for approval from the city to add that extra height?
Yes, yeah. Five story design was discussed with the city of Noblesville planning committee and they gave conditional approval. Obviously, we were going through the permitting process now, but we showed them the plans for a five story garage and they, they said that it would be acceptable.
Okay, that's, uh, that's good to know. And the other is, if so, what does this do to the timeline of that project? If, if the next blower.
From a start date or a finish date, there's.
The start date.
Realistically, depending on timelines of approval, it doesn't do anything.
Okay.
Um, you know, we're, we're designing the garage with some flexibility in it so that we can make a relatively quick decision. But obviously before we go out to the marketplace and price the job, we would want to know exactly what the final scope is.
Okay, that's the only questions I have. Thank you.
Just maybe as a comment to Commissioner Altman's comments. Um, I remember when our jail was on the county court, uh, right across here on the county courthouse. And the debate was at that time, when we built the new jail on Cumberland Road, should we add it so that we could build a second story? We went back and forth, back and forth, and it was built. And I don't think it was approved to build a second floor on it, so the foundation was not built that way. So later on, then we had to build an additional jail, which was so much expensive compared to just adding a second floor. So, you know, I, I think there's a benefit to discuss this. Uh, there's a benefit to, for reducing the cost, but then for the inconvenience of the people here in the courthouse and the citizens, I think there's a benefit. So I think it's a legitimate answer or a question to be talked about. And, and I'm not saying anything detrimental to Brad concerning this because I wasn't part of the original discussions of, of the 9.5 million. But I remember that debate way back.
Well, you know, the thing about that is, Steve, and I'm in favor of the garage. I'm not really not in favor of the fifth floor. What I'm not in favor of is changing the plan after we got a plan. Now, the thing about it is, is that, uh, it, it makes sense, you know, I mean, just how, where do you want to spend your money? And maybe we'll be more enlightened after we have this meeting on the 23rd as to what our other financial obligations might be going forward to know, uh, what we can and can't do. But also keep in mind in the short term path, we were right up to adding on to this building. We got special legislation. We had everything in order and pulled back at the last minute because the commissioners, and I'm not disagreeing with them, didn't have a comfort level with it. So you can look to the way past or you can look to a couple of years ago, which example do you want to use? You know what I mean? That's why I don't really want to give a commitment farther than the commitment we've already given to sell the land until all the ducks are in a row. I'm going to see some signed papers someplace because unless they're all signed, there is no deal. You know, when Ken first called me, he goes, yeah, we want to add $2 million. We ain't got a project yet. Well, there's an idea of a project, but until everybody signs, there is no project. So hopefully that'll happen in the next 30 days. We'll have finance, we'll come up with some options and then we just take a roll call and go on.
If I could just clarify, um, calling, okay, so it was, it was originally brought to my attention and Robin brought it over during finance committee.
What?
This was brought over to me to sign to see if I would be the person I said, yeah, for discussion. That was at the finance committee when I was there.
You didn't have any knowledge of it before?
No.
No, no, when we had, no, what I'm saying is when, when.
No, I know, I, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to put this in, in, I mean, I get that people want to push blame. I was just trying to get information, have an open dialogue. The one thing that hasn't been discussed, which I, I wanted to clarify, was how many people we had to support now? What was the growth potential so we could have that metric? The second metric was, when do we have to make this decision by? Because there's going to be construction costs they're going to have to go for, whether it's buying precast or getting started. That will have to be determined. And it was determined after we had, you and I met, that that was going to be after the, it was going to be late March. Um, so that we, we could go to finance and then have a decision in, in the next, in our next council meeting. And then that, that would be able to, one, one way or another. I mean, that was, that was the whole bit. I, it was just to be transparent about the process and the discussion, and that's why it's on the agenda today.
Sue, go ahead.
Madam President, I just have one comment. While our concern is the county employees and the jurors and the courts for housing them during the daytime, there's one benefit that we just can't ignore and that is that asset to this community during the evenings and weekends. For this whole area is going to be redeveloped and that is tax revenue, both for food and beverage and the restaurants that are going to come. That is tax revenue for the properties that are being built. And the fact that we can, um, in having convenient parking and not having convenient parking is detrimental to a business. So if we end up shutting that, that down to build the fifth floor five years from now, those businesses are going to be hurting and we are going to be hurting because we're not going to get that, that, especially the food and beverage tax. So there's looking out, it's just making sense to do it right pending the review in the finance committee. Because there's those, in those other things that are tangible that we don't think of right away. So that's one thing I just wanted to comment on.
I agree with you and I live in Noblesville and the thing about it is, the main problem with parking in Noblesville is during business day, not in the evening. On the other hand, if you want to take the exact opposite of your, uh, example there, then every time we build a highway, we would build six lanes wide to take care of the future. But we don't. We deal with what we got, the amount of money we got and what the traffic flow is. So if, if your only recourse is, well, we're doing it for the future, then you would build everything three times bigger than you needed to have.
And we should deal with empirical evidence that's right in front of us. I've heard that discussion in another community. Every time they build something, it's that this will bring more tax revenue with not one number. And I'm not saying I'm not for it, but that point is, I've seen that in other communities and they say that it's going to bring this amount of tax. And, and they don't have any numbers in mind of what it's going to bring or how much. Our job is to look at where we put our employees and the jury. It's not those other food and beverage taxes or any of that type of stuff.
I was just commenting that we need to.
I get what you're saying, but for us, what we got to look at, what are, is the employees and the jurors and what we pay to do that because we have evidence and numbers to back up those types of things. That's where we're looking, how we evaluate these things.
When we look at a project, and you know that, we always look 20 years out. We always try to look 20 years out. I don't have a crystal ball. You don't have a crystal ball. Everything got turned up on its notes with COVID and working from home. But I can't believe that the city of Noblesville is not going to grow and the need for courts is going to grow. And I did not know we would have to shut everything down to build that fifth floor and that is the biggest determining factor for me that will come to a screeching halt if it is needed. And I personally think it will be needed in the next 10 years.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Patch it up next month.
Yeah, we have a motion.
Well, we should have, we should, we debated enough tonight to just have an upper down vote next month.
Yeah, well, that's correct. So it's been moved and seconded to go to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item two, commissioners EMA benefits appropriation in the amount of $10,982. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next on the agenda, we have EMA additional in the amount of $143,550. Is there a motion for discussion? So a second? Is there any discussion? I know Shane has some information we may be excited to share, so I do want.
I want to suggest to follow up on what you said a few minutes ago. I was able to go by and, and look through the vaccine center we got out at the 4H ground at the big building. And I've seen the one, and those people are doing great work.
I agree.
Everybody's in a positive mood, except the one old guy that didn't want to let me in. And, uh, but I can't say enough about all the people that are working. Everybody's happy to be there, happy to get a vaccine and it couldn't be any better for our listeners.
Well, thank you, thank you very much. One of the, the things that we learned today is that the president has signed an executive order, asked, or instructing FEMA to be able to provide up to 100% reimbursement for COVID vaccine operations. So one of the, that's great news for us and one of the things that we've already, I've already talked to Robin and we're going to be looking at this very closely. And even past experience with some of the things that we've done with FEMA when I worked at the state was, you know, looking at even can we, we can't rent space from ourselves, but there have been opportu, there have been instances in the past where even FEMA has allowed a percentage of that because we've lost revenue from the 4H fairgrounds. So we'll be exploring all of those different options and looking into that very closely to see what it is that we can ask for. to see what it is that we can ask for reimbursement in ma, this $104,000 that's paying for the, the guy that wouldn't let you in, sorry. But that, uh, that is. That will help, uh, you know, that's helping out not only Riverview, but also, of course, the Health Department, making sure that, that we're continuing those operations and supporting them. So it's really great news that we received today from the federal government in being able to help provide that assistance.
You have no idea how excited Todd and I are to start on this next endeavor.
Sure you are.
Thankfully, though, the council approved for us to hire a recovery specialist. And we are very excited to hire that person, who's, this will be their life in helping us, making sure that, not only for us, but also for the municipalities, that we can make sure that we're getting all of the federal dollars that we can out of FEMA to ensure that, not only for, for COVID, but for things like mitigation projects. There's a lot of money that is made available. It may be a flooding incident in Fe, or in Evansville, but there is mitigation dollars that are available statewide. And our, you know, street departments and public works departments, they'll, this is part of that job of that person to be able to help support them and showing them some of these things that they potentially can take advantage of.
Two things, um, is that, is the staff, uh, that, that's gonna be going through and working with this? Is that also part of the reimbursable?
It is.
Good. Um, the other thing is, when, when this is done, whatever year that's gonna be, hopefully this year, what happens to the facility? Is it something that, that can be repurposed?
The 4H fairgrounds?
Well, the, the, the clinic that we're building out there.
Well, it, it's just tables and chairs.
Why, I know, but is it something we're gonna be storing, that we're gonna be able to repurpose in four years when COVID-20, whatever comes out?
One of the things that happened after the H1N1, uh, virus, that happened, and I don't wanna speak for Jason, but the Health Department purchased a lot of the equipment that we're using out there right now at the fairgrounds. And so that's been kept, and they do exercises and training on that, the Health Department does. So all of those resources will be available. Some of the infrastructure, uh, the things that Chris Mertens is doing, that's gonna be, that's eligible for reimbursement. That's just gonna help in, increase the infrastructure for the IT side. All the things that Steve Wood is doing with the building, the generator, you know, all of that's eligible for reimbursement. And tho, those are things, Steve was really, I hate to say this, because it's hard for me to compliment him, but, uh, Steve, Steve did a really good job at making sure that that generator that's putting, that he put in, that we can use that in other locations. So all of those things in that infrastructure that, that's going into it, it is really an investment. But thankfully, we're gonna get our money back for that.
Is it, is it still just two shops with a vaccine?
Correct, it's still two.
Do you, there, talk of moving to one soon?
There are some, uh, there are some manufacturers that are, that are requesting emergency approval from the FDA that, that are just a single-dose vaccine.
I think you might have read that it was, if you'd had COVID already, that you might only need one. That was something that just came up recently, is that what I?
They're, they're not approved.
Yeah.
Okay.
Johnson &amp; Johnson, for example, is just a single dose.
Are there other questions?
No.
It's been moved and seconded for approval, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Extension appropriation in the amount of $20,000, is there a motion?
What is that, Amy, what do they need?
Move.
It's to cover the sales tax, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. Second.
It's moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, item B, Fund 1122 Project Income, requesting an appropriation of $106,439.
No, 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 I skipped one.
Oh, sorry, I apologize. Item five of, of Section A, Planning Appropriation in the Amount of $8,000.
Steve, you wanna talk about the?
Can I get a motion first?
Second. You said motion, I'll second.
I will make the motion.
Okay.
Pick someone.
Earlier when we started the meeting, I talked about having some personnel issues, and this is one of them. Linda Verdad is here with the planning department. If you have questions, she can answer.
Are there questions?
Linda, you want us to give you $8,000 to somebody cover your spot when you go on vacation?
No, I want $3,000 to cover my spot when I go on vacation.
That, that's really not.
The other $5,000 was for, um, our building inspector.
What?
It's for our building inspector. He needed to increase his fees because of the new fee schedule that's been required for insurances. He's having to do special commercial liability, professional liability, at specific insurance rates as requested by the county. So he was requesting an additional, um, increase in his inspection fees to go from $100 for residential inspection to $125 for a residential inspection. And then I believe it's $150 for a commercial inspection. The $3,000 for me.
I, I, okay, I understand the inspector thing.
Okay.
And I read your, your paperwork that you turned in. Kinda like it.
Okay.
Somebody oughta cover it, that should not be coming in front of the county council. That, that's an internal problem, and I think the planning commission oughta been dealt, dealing with it, not, not the county council. I, so, you put 'em together, I'll be voting against that, that's not the way we deal with that. You got a three-person department, one person wants to go on vacation, can't get the other two to commit to cover their spot, so come and ask us for money so they can hire a temp to come in and set in your spot.
So what are you trying to say, what's your solution?
The other two oughta cover.
Why do they cover him? I mean, what, what, what is this?
Isn't that why every other department does it?
I think that the issue that you're saying is that this is, should've some, been something that they caught at budget hearing and kept in their budget, and then it probably would've been something that would've been planned for.
Everybody's a full-time employee, everybody goes on vacation.
Understand, but I mean.
Right, but if like Dawn or Robin has somebody that goes on va, I mean, I assume if you guys go on vacation, you're not asking for somebody to step in, but, I mean, I see where Brad's.
Hire a temp to come in and cover that spot?
Oh, no, I'm, I'm not, I'm not suggesting one way or another, I'm just saying that.
Well, I, I read it, yeah.
So I still didn't hear an answer on the solution.
Have the other two cover it.
Yeah, is there a reason that they wouldn't?
Um, I haven't been told that they would be available because it's too far out to make a decision. Byron Settles works as our GIS, and he also does the media for the county. So there's a lot of times he may be called out to do different projects for different departments, making him not available for the office. And, uh, our director, Charles Kiphart, has indicated that when I'm requesting vacation time a couple of months out, he doesn't know what he's going to be doing closer to time, so he can't commit to giving me time off.
Okay.
And as indicated in my paperwork, a lot of my vacations and time off is involving other people and other families. And I can't wait until two weeks before to make a decision as to whether somebody's gonna be available.
You shouldn't have to, but that is interesting that.
And this, this person you're gonna bring in, I mean, to bring, just, just bring a part-time staffer in, like, um, and this is, it, it's a small thing, I get it, but I mean, you, you lost me at, I, 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 he, he said what he said, but then you turned around and just said that, that you, you really didn't, it doesn't sound like you've totally tried to cover that base. And that's fine, but you, you're gonna bring somebody in, um, it doesn't sound like they need any training at all, right? You could just bring anybody in and pay them $25 an hour just to sit there.
Well, that was the problem, because the professional staffing agency wanted, what was it, $26.92?
Yeah.
Per hour to sit there and answer the phone, because I don't wanna give them access to my computer. So they would just be answering the phone. And I was figuring on the amount of $3,000 was set that if I had to be gone all eight days in April, and nobody was available to cover me, that person would have to cover those eight days.
But you don't, but you don't know if they can cover you or not, from what you're saying?
I, I don't.
You don't?
No.
All right.
And then I found out that if we got the part-time line item back, I would only have to pay somebody $15 an hour, and we could bring in a former county employee. So, to me, it was saving the county $10. $10 an hour.
I guess the real question I have is why Chuck isn't here doing this instead, because he's the director.
I don't disagree.
Um, there are extenuating circumstances that I'm not at liberty to discuss.
Okay. Are there any other questions, Linda? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
I'm opposed to it, too, just because of the, the last thing you said, you didn't even check if you could cover that or not. So, I mean, I don't think it was time to come to us, so that's where mine's at.
Motion carries, five to two.
Thank you.
Which will probably be the majority of motions that come in front of council.
Now, moving on to item B, Fund 1122 Project Income, requesting the appropriation of $106,439. Looks like we have items one and two, which is an additional and a transfer. Just to give some backstory, my understanding that this is state funding for Ralph Watson. It's really just, has to do with the budget keeping because they're on the state budgets from July to June, and so it's bookkeeping, so if there's a motion.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
That was combining one and two, just to clarify. Fund, I'm sorry, item C, Fund 1138, Transfer of $250,000. Is there a motion for discussion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded, do we have discussion?
No, it's transfer.
Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Item D, Fund 1159, The Health, Health Requesting Appropriation of $402,400. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Now, this is, okay, I got it.
Moved in second, so this is in conjunction with?
Yep, I got it.
Okay. There's no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Item E, Fund 1176, MVH, Requesting An Appropriation Of $27,000. Councilwoman Schwartz was our sponsor, is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
It's moved in second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Fund 1219, Park and Recreation, Requesting An Appropriation Of $950,000. Again, Steve Schwartz was our sponsor, is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
It's moved in second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Fund 1222, 144 Amendment. Is there a motion?
What department is that? So move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's moved in second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Fund 4623, P25 Radio Syncing Fund, Requesting Appropriation Of $32,333.50. Is there a motion for discussion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Fund 4809, 2013 Geo Bond Proceeds, Series A, Requesting $603,198.40.
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved in second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Fund 4810, 2013 Geo Bonds Fund, Requesting An Appropriation Of $508,717.56.
Move.
Second.
It's moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Fund 4907, Highway Special, Requesting An Appropriation Of $3,239,446.
What's a highway special, Steve?
A motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's the balance of the 5.6 million, if I'm not mistaken, um, from last year, as there was like shortfall.
There was not enough money in the account, and at that time.
With Fishers, that whole.
37, Route 37.
This is not changing our commitment, this is just, it's just paying for our part of the commitment.
There wasn't enough money in the account.
Account, right.
Yes.
When have we had not had enough money in the account?
Haven't had enough to appropriate 5.6 million dollars.
What account was that in?
In the highway. Fund 4907. Any other discussion?
No.
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Gateway Air Budget Upload, Item L, um, just, if I could have a motion to combine and approve.
Did you also get the second one in that MVH?
What?
There was a second one.
There's a second.
$4,650, Amy, for overtime?
It was overtime that was missed for the, with study, um, it was.
Oh, sorry, where are my, it was, maybe I don't have that on my agenda.
I don't either.
It was, it was part of the total of, uh, 4907.
Oh, my apologies, sorry, it was combined, normally it was broken down, so I apologize that. So that would've been combined in the 3 million total, though, so it was already approved.
Okay.
Right.